And we're here to talk about redistricting. Ted, Jim, who's gonna lead the charge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate you getting here a little early. We want to make sure we had plenty of time to have a conversation about what we know, what we don't know, and then the process for getting to the outcome of our mandated redistricting.
I can't interrupt just briefly.
Sure.
Now that Mr. Crager's on, if he can report where he's participating remotely from.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not real sure after that little brief departure of mine. Thirty-three Pier Point, New Bern, North Carolina.
Great, and Cole, can I confirm that the live stream has started?
It has.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Thank you. So, at this point, there are a number of things going on, you know, at the state level with redistricting. There's some legal changes about what we do and do not have to do. There's a law that's in place about our schedule. We certainly have talked through those things, but what we wanted to do today was at least kind of lay out the data that we have as far as difference between the population in your current districts and talk through the process of getting to the new districts that we need to have and how to get those approved. So, with that circuitous explanation, we do have Jim Whip here, who is our resident GIS expert and has provided a tool that I think some of you have been using to move census tracts around to kind of play with it and see what that might look like. And he is gonna pull up his GIS tool and sort of talk to you a little bit about what we know and what some of the changes have been. So, if you have any questions at this point, certainly happy to entertain them. We have members of the Electoral Board and our general registrar here. I'm sure they're very curious as to how this may go down and they probably have some good helpful insight for us, you know, on kind of what they're seeing going on in this process.
Can I add something real quick, just to make sure everybody knows? There are definitions of what we can use as boundaries. There's a state code section that says we have to use a clearly observable boundary, which is a named street or road or highway, river stream that has to be on the United States Bureau of Census. So, just FYI, we have to, we're limited as to what we can use as borders.
Okay, important question for you. Are census blocks by their nature, do they use those kinds of orders? Or do we have a situation where we may need to split a census block?
We may need to split a census block. The rules are it has to be compact, contiguous territory, but then it says the boundaries have to be clearly observable and they have a list of what the boundaries can be. And I don't think the Census Bureau uses that. I could be wrong about that.
I think they did.
Did they?
We did this last time. I remember that there were places that I would like to have cut, but I couldn't because there was no boundary between them. And then if you cut a census block, how do you know how many people are in each half of a census block?
And they may come from the feds that way, I don't know. We just, we can't.
That would certainly make sense, but some of those census blocks have really odd shapes.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's what concerns me about, to your point, is, you know, do they align with some discernible physical boundary, like a river stream or whatever? But for instance, the boundary of Lake of the Woods off towards 20, that's not a boundary.
Right.
Right. Because there's one block there I can recall what it looks like is.
Real long.
Real long in there, yeah, it looks like a rope.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to find that out because my assumption has been that census blocks, that you could use census blocks to do this. If in fact we're gonna have to be going, I mean, it seems to me that you would have to be able to, otherwise we would have to go out and you'd have to look at every census block.
Yeah, right.
You'd have to take a census if you're gonna split a block. Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't have the information. That's right. I mean, you could.
Maybe they come that way. I'm just, the state code has a whole chapter or a whole section saying.
Yeah, everything we did last time, the census block had those problems.
That was written many years ago, probably.
Last update was in '01, 2001.
Yeah, but I'm talking about that, that's current stipulation.
Yeah, originally in '86, so.
Yeah, which is the snow age when it comes to computers and being able to move this stuff around.
The other wild card that we don't control, but will control us is congressional and how to delegate district alignments. Is there any update on that process?
I'll tell you how that works by state code. Since we don't have them yet, we use the June 15th of this year boundaries for established precincts and then we'll have to correct it next year. Because we won't, because we're not allowed to have split precincts. And so, we're gonna have to use the boundaries that they used as a June 15th of this year to create our precincts now. And then if those, if we wind up with some split precincts after they're gone with their lines, we'll have to.
So, that says we don't wait, that we can begin work at least.
Yes.
Yeah, I think one of the questions I had is how late can we make our decision and still meet our deadline, given the state the maximum opportunity to get their precincts and districts set?
And using June 15th is a may, not a shall. It says we may, if we don't want to wait, we may use June 15th, but realize we've got it. We'll have to potentially realign some of our precincts if their lines never have left with our lines.
And that would only be if Orange County, which it currently isn't, but were split on either the federal or state level, correct, is what we're talking about.
Right, so federal or state, yes.
There was some news overnight, I guess, where the state redistricting commission, they had a strategy of going kind of region by region. It seemed like it was gonna take forever, but then they said they threw that all out. They're gonna do statewide maps and it would be done by the end of the month, so, you know, kind of the line.
Did they say which month?
So, we'll see if that, if that's true or not, but.
Okay, Jim, you have something to tell us?
With that.
Um, I need to change the output.
Oh, yes, sir.
Good.
There we go.
All right, I've got just a couple slides that kind of do an overall view of the data compared to the 2010 versus now. And then we'll dive straight into the tool and kind of have a discussion about that. But comparing 2010 to 2020 census, you know, in 2010, there was just over 1,400 census blocks assigned and that's actually gone down to just over 1,000. So, and I'm not exactly sure why that would be. It could do something where, you know.
The number of census blocks went down?
Yeah.
Ooh.
A lot.
Maybe down by what, 40%?
So, and.
That speaks for the opportunity for more problems.
And this 2020 Orange County census data is the final numbers from the adjusted state data. So then if we look at the household comparison, you know, obviously, uh, this, you know, in 2020, we have a bump of, you know, 2,773 in total population, which, you know, equals 36,254 for a total population. And then we also had an increase in total number of households by just over 1,000 to go from 14,616 households to 15,671 households.
And that matches with, I remember reports on building crews. I mean, we were running about 100 new homes each year.
Yeah.
And that's what we had, but over 10 years, we have 100 new homes each year.
Yeah, it's been.
Jim, what about the Central Virginia Regional Jail? Are those numbers figured in here somewhere, because I know it's a.
Yeah, they've been adjusted.
Okay.
I pulled up the U.S. Census Bureau. Their definition of census block slightly different from state code. They call it a statistical area bounded by physical features such as roads good, streams good, railroad tracks, we don't list, but probably okay. And non-visible boundaries such as property lines, city, township, school districts, county limits, and short line of sight extensions would, none of those would be valid on the state.
Short line of sight extensions, that's a good one.
So.
Surveyors put that.
It's a tree over here and a block, stone over here.
So technically, their census block could use boundaries that don't match state code.
Interesting, okay. And then kind of looking at it from a district by district standpoint, if we reference the, again, the 2010 data versus the 2020 state adjusted final numbers, every district had a population change increase except for District 3, and this is due to the block that has C D R J, Mr. Moser, where it actually lost 351 persons. And we had very high increases in District 4, which gained over 1,400 people, which now has, you know, just over 8,000 individuals. And the new county, total county population total being 60, or excuse me, 36,120 individuals means that roughly every district now needs to have just over 7,200 persons, which is an increase by about, you know, 600 or so individuals, or about 400 individuals because our previous boundaries are around, you know, encapsulate about 6,600 individuals. So, it will be a pretty big increase for every district. And, yeah. So, that's kind of what it looks like from a state or from a district by district overview. I'll dive into the tool that I have that should show things a little bit more clearly. Let me just escape. All right. Um, okay, so visually speaking.
Jim, can you do like function F8?
Oh, hang on, yeah, sorry, yes. Function F8. Let's see. Let's see.
There we go.
Now, the other thing is we've got to be within 10% of, more than 10% difference between any district.
Five is totally safe. Five to 10 is probably safe. If you're within five, it's.
You're okay.
You're okay.
10 might be a threat.
10, you're kind of here, you're starting to stray a little bit.
So, 200, 2, 300, or so.
So, what's visually represented here on the screen is how the district boundaries layout exactly now. So, we can see our five districts, but it's using the 2020 population data as it currently sits in the census numbers now. So, we can see right now, just with our current boundaries, obviously, this wouldn't fly with the total populations in each district, you know, not being relatively close to win, to within one another. And this tool, let's switch to this, this pull up. This tool has the ability for us to drill down and actually select each census block, which is kind of small on the screen here, but it'll give us, it'll give us the ability to actually go in.
It's a little far out there.
Just a little far.
Who's our map?
There we go. This sounds a little bit better. Okay, so, this tool will give us the ability to actually go in and examine each census block as we see fit. So, for example, if I'm looking, you know, close here into some of these boundaries, I can go in and change our aerial imagery to kind of, you know, for us to start seeing some streets and some overlays and things of that nature. I can click on any of the census blocks and it'll actually, it'll actually, you know, give you the census block ID as well as the adjusted population and the adjusted housing figure. So, for instance, if I wanted to go in and just click a census block here, I'm gonna choose this one here because it shows it has 207 individuals living in this census block and it's within District 1. If I want to go ahead and just change it to District 2, just for demonstration purposes, I can go in, click the Smart Editor tool, go in here and change the district from District 1 to District 2, click Save, and then the map will reload and then this should change to 7,200.
That'll help, yes.
So.
That probably wouldn't pass muster legally speaking, but.
So, then obviously, I can see I fat fingered it and need to change it back.
He doesn't want the. It seems to be implying any real change.
Sure.
Could we move that district into Greencount?
Sure.
Will the tool do that?
But I'll change it back and we'll see this drop. We'll see these numbers change here in a few seconds, but, and there we go, it changes from 7,200 to 7,000. So, like I said, I think this is gonna be a good tool just to kind of go through and as, you know, to look at the census blocks and start playing with the boundaries because we can add in, we can see roads here, but we can also add in additional supporting layers such as, you know, any recognized Virginia waterway. We can add in the roads layer to actually start kind of crafting those boundaries, but obviously, we'll need to get these numbers, you know, to be, you know, pretty close to one of them or kind of around that 7,200 sweet spot. Because these are the numbers as they stand now with the current boundaries that we have in place. So, but I think this is gonna be very useful to helping us get there, at least start the conversation.
Jim, I played with this a little bit, but I, due to my internet service, I was limited in how much I could do. Is there a layer that will mark, put a pointer at the existing polling places? One of the issues that I'd like to, and Mark and I talked about this a little bit, to at least have part of the discussion is to consider the polling place location as it relates to where people live. In my district, for example, over the years, people that are now in District 2 and live near Towne, Gordonsville, for example, they used to vote in Gordonsville. Now they have to drive to Lightfoot Elementary School to vote. For them, that's a, that's a good number of additional miles. We can't fix all of that, obviously, but it seems to be that if there's a layer that has the polling place, at least visually, we can wrestle with that to some extent. So, that, like I said, Mark and I talked about it just briefly to see if there's any, you know, thing we could do as we move things around, we're gonna be forced to move them, we have to move them.
Sure, yeah.
Consider that, so, is that a layer or didn't that be a layer or?
It is a layer and we can definitely add it in so you can see it right here on this map.
Okay.
That's not an issue at all.
Okay.
Because that's important also, it would be nice to have people voting in their own district instead of like Mr. White's district votes in my district, half of it does.
Mr. Marshall's district votes in my district, Unionville Elementary, for example.
Right.
Can I be in one of them?
You're being one, I mean, I don't know that we can. And I don't want to, you know, that.
Which is convenient though for.
Well, that's the thing, is it, I don't want to make this the number one criterion that we try to wrestle with, obviously, but it's among the considerations that ought to be one. Because I've heard people rousing about it over the years. I've got an issue with the people who live outside the lake having to come inside a private community, a gated community. And in the past, apparently, the Department of Justice has looked at scans of that. So, we have tried to, at least for that segment of my district that's outside the lake, we've made an easy access to the clubhouse. And even though I'm closer to the clubhouse, I gotta go to the other side of the lake to vote, mainly so that we don't have people having to go to find our community center, which is a little tough if you don't know the community. I assume there are set of rules and regulations about what a polling place needs to look like or be like. Is there, how restrictive is that? Because if, I know, for example, the Unionville Elementary School, which is in District 2, but it's a polling place for District 3, but I don't know if we have any options of.
I can answer that. Do you mind? Is it okay?
Yeah, please.
My understanding is, and they haven't changed this in the code, each polling place has to be within one mile of the boundary of the precinct. So, for instance, Unionville needs the qualifications because it's within one mile of the boundary. The other thing to consider and keep in mind, and part of the reason probably why schools were chosen, is because every single one of these places needs to be ADA compliant. I would argue that mine run is pushing the limits of ADA requirements.
I don't think you have to argue very hard.
Um, that's, we thankfully, we have not really had any complaints about it from voters, but we have had places like Centers for Independent Living, which are, is a group that goes out and monitors polling places and looks for ADA violations, has sent us numerous letters about that over the years. And I've responded accordingly and they've left us alone. They've taken the feedback and understand how this, but it's just some things to keep in mind when it gets to the polling place aspect of it and stuff.
Just FYI too, may not be of any interest, but state law actually allows us to make grants to bring polling places up to ADA compliance. So, if we're using some sort of private facility, we are allowed by state law to make a grant to bring that facility up to ADA standard facilities too.
So, at a ramp at a church or something like that, or a great door.
Is that a holding place is there?
It is, yes, sir.
Of course, the other factor is that, you know, with all day voting, every day, everywhere, I'm not sure polling places are gonna matter a whole lot going forward. That's relevant. I mean, you know.
Yeah, last year it was 50/50. Then it was 50/50.
Was it really? See, I wondered, okay.
We had about 9,900 people vote early in some form, either in person or by mail, and 10,000 gave support places, so.
Wow, I hadn't heard that, that's.
Yeah, it was a big challenge.
What was those numbers again?
It was about 9,900 people who had voted early, either in person or by mail. There were way more who voted in person. It was like 66, 6,700 and another 3, 3,300 in mail and then just over 10,000 people stood up in the polling places. So, the challenge of the early voting was, it made election day that easier, the actual day, so.
So, for you folks following along at home, I know we have a large internet audience, many thousands of people tuned in. We now have that tool online.
It is 26,120. I was, you did identify the polling places, did I hear that?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't think we're gonna get into that level today, is what.
Well, it sounds like one of the things we have to either find out about or decide on is this question of census blocks. My tendency is for us to probably just assume that the census blocks are fine. And if somebody does, unless they raise an objection, then they can do that.
Yeah.
Because if we're gonna, we're gonna have to wade into that, I don't even know how we'd go about doing it.
The only guy I have no idea what it is.
And it just seems like census block is a, I mean, that's a fairly, it's not like we made them up. You know, they're, they're a neutral sort of, you know.
And the fact that they dropped so many makes it a little bigger and less detailed and less option for moving things around.
Yeah.
What we are allowed to use, I have no idea what this means. I looked it up and I still have no idea what it is. We're allowed to use the polygon boundary on the Tiger line files of the United States Bureau of Census as a boundary. I looked up what those were. It's an overlay that you can put on the census data, so I don't know if we have that, but.
Yeah, so.
Do you have that?
These census blocks in here are technically from the census, the census, United States Census Bureau's Tiger line shapefile database, so that's all these are.
So, they've already overlaid this.
So, these are the polygons?
Correct, yes, sir. Tiger stands for something within the census, I should know it is, but I know it's, but it's, this is essentially part of a shapefile classification, so these are the.
So, that's what we have, we should find.
We should, yeah.
It's our.
Well, then.
And now we have the polling places up. Yep, polling places are up. So, we're in these guys.
And you see what I'm telling you, if you look at the Gordonsville polling place and a person that, well.
Yeah.
Go back a little bit, and a person that lived.
Go a little back, that goes.
Yeah.
Go ahead and pull back out a little further.
That lived, you know, near the line, that probably were just moved in the last census. Now they're going all the way to Lightfoot, you see? That's one of the, one of the issues. And I've also heard from people in District 3, I guess it was, that are split between voting in town versus voting at Unionville Elementary in some cases. That separation is, oh, that clean, according to them, I don't know the details, but that's just a factor that I think is, is worth us considering.
Certainly, yeah. These are 10 current polling locations that we have to haul them out.
Jim, do you have the ability to go in and, and show the last iteration that I came up with? You have the ability?
Yes, sir.
Could you do that just for fun with the census voting? I mean, with the precinct showing?
Absolutely. Give you a good place to start, maybe.
Yes, you get to see all my tricks today.
And believe me, we're not good enough to know what we're looking at.
Or appreciate it.
You and I had a brief conversation about sort of the approach that you took trying to achieve. One was polling places, the other one was sort of allowing communities to be.
Yeah, I didn't do much polling places because I know, I knew some of them were, but I didn't have them on the map. But yeah, I was definitely aiming for what we had talked, okay, yeah, that's, that looks familiar.
Let me save this and I will open E-dashboard.
Let's see, back and forth there.
E-dashboard. Well, it looks like a lot of clicks and what have you. Imagine if we were doing this with a, like a grease pencil and an overhead projector and a calculator.
I miss that bit.
So, this is, this is Mr. Johnson's iteration and you can see here that he's, you know, got us pretty close to the 7,200 just based on his own trials, so, and we have the polling places overlaid, so if you want to zoom anywhere, feel free to direct me.
But what is the, with that iteration, what is the split in Lake of the Woods?
Yeah.
It's very, well, it's not really much changed.
Okay, that's.
Let's see what it looks like.
Matter of fact, I don't know if it changes at all.
No, it looks like it stayed exactly the same, okay.
Lake of the Woods stays the same and that little second, little point that's down in your district, next to 3, I bet you it doesn't have more than a dozen people on it.
16.
Okay.
Well, there's another one there.
16, 4, and 12.
There you go. There's 32 people down there.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. All right, very good. Where, on that iteration, where does the, where's the western boundary between 4 and 3? Where, where, on that iteration, where does the, where's the western boundary between four and three?
Is that the Burr Hill Road?
Looks like.
Yeah, I mean, just so everybody knows, I, I did this with, just on my own for fun, trying to sort of get to reasonably compact districts that are the right numbers.
That's fine.
Without any real talking to my colleagues about
No, I understand.
Uh, specific sensitivities.
No, but overall, it looks pretty good. Uh, I see that you made your district very compact, so.
What did you use as the, you're using twenty down there, is that right? Uh, between two and three, and two and four?
Yeah, that's through twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
The biggest change I see there is the, the Rhodesville area flipped from
Right.
two and three.
Right.
Which probably makes.
Which sense, which I think, Keith, you were interested in saying.
Yeah, that was, you know.
If you also go up outside of Orange, uh, along Madison Line, um, yeah, right about where your cursor is, you can go in there.
Just curious on that little indent that, uh, your district has up against Orange, what area is that?
Um, which indent would that be?
The one up against, uh, the town of Orange.
Well, but there's, oh, that's, that's what all that is.
In this, in this version or in the?
No, you're gonna have to go back to where you were.
But wait a minute, you don't, you, you don't mean off of this map. You just mean pull back.
Do you know a little bit?
Pull back.
Yeah, yeah.
Where you can see Jim's, uh, district.
Are you talking about District Two?
Now, you see that right there, we've got the cursor. We'll go up again.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's basically a census block and.
That's right.
That's the block, yeah.
Yeah.
Where's that in relation to twenty, I'm just curious?
Is that Monro- is that Monrovia?
Uh, it's.
I think that's north of twenty, is it not?
Well, that's twenty that goes across there.
Yes, twenty is here where.
Okay, that sounds, okay, yeah. So that would be Monrovia Road, correct?
I think it is Monrovia, I believe, but.
It's like, yeah, it looks like it's this black line.
But that, that piece did change from the previous, correct?
Uh, let's see. Um, Brick Church Road, uh, Brick Church was in two before.
No, I, I didn't, I don't, I don't think I gave two anything that wasn't three. I don't, I don't think I did. I gave three some things that had been two.
So that is, all right, that's real. I bet you.
Yeah, that's twenty.
I was thinking this is twenty, twenty. I see now.
Now, can we go back up to, to the, up at the top there, like the, uh, yeah, right up in there? Can we zoom in there?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah.
So you're picking up some Skyline Drive.
Skyline Drive. No, that's, that's, that's mine now, yeah. I thought I, what, what is the, uh?
Like the town thing.
Is that, that's fifteen, okay.
This is fifteen, yes, sir.
All right. All right. Yeah, I think that's as it is. Can you effortlessly switch back and forth between maps?
I can. This is how it currently stands.
Okay. So I didn't check, at, at one iteration, I, I changed something up there on this one here. By the way, there's some, there's some odd, like flood plain. Like, you see that strip of green there that's along the Rapidan River that's it's, it's, nobody lives there. It's not really part of District Three. I just didn't click on it and make the change.
Well, in some of these, uh, census blocks, the, the information is not accurate. I know of one census block that shows three people living in it, and I know the other person that lives in it.
Well, maybe there's somebody in the basement. You're over.
I, I looked around, I didn't. So there's an entire block that shows three people.
Maybe it's a cat.
And it, and it's off by fifty percent.
So again, I, you know, this was a stamp that I took.
Yeah, you compare that to this.
Wouldn't you say, Keith?
I see it definitely cleans up some lines.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, basically, I mean, it's a little more compact.
And the numbers work pretty well. And there with, what is this extreme range?
Oh, they're all.
Seventy two, sixty three.
There was a couple percentage points of.
Oh, yeah.
It's, yeah, seventy two, seventy seven.
So it's like.
And seventy one, seventy nine. So that's definitely in the ballpark to make those final tweaks if you need to.
Let's.
I'm looking at the Lake of the Woods. Not only did I get a lot more people filled, but there's also some people who retired there, having owned the property in the past, and were not residents. They owned the property, but were not residents. And this changes.
Could we, Jim, could you, uh, well, it would be nice to be able to have these maybe printed out on paper where we could look at them side by side so that we can see exactly the changes.
Sure.
You mean a current and, and, and then this?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you all feel like that iteration is something that's kind of a starting point, then that will give everybody a chance to kind of compare the two. Take some time and really compare it, make sure there's not something there that you're not noticing on first watch.
So that little point you gave thirty two, uh, and you gave to, uh, to Jim down there in the corner.
Hmm.
That would work for them, because they could probably vote them at the middle school, even though it's, it's, and it's not outside their district, but they actually have to pass through a different district to get to it.
Well, you have to.
No.
They could go along there.
Well, one of the, one of the things that I thought was neat about moving those people into District Four is that they didn't have to come into the lake to, to vote.
Yeah, well.
And that would be.
Yeah, well, you've, you've got some people in the lake that are not happy about going outside the lake to vote either.
Well, that's true, and part of your district. And none of those people are gonna be affected, and I'll, I'll hear about that.
Right, no, absolutely. Uh, can you, Jim, can you scroll over to the Wilderness Shores area?
Yes, sir.
Because something we may want to think about is, um, if there's someplace over in Wilderness Shores, such as their community center or something, that could become a polling place. Um, we may want to look at putting a polling place up there for District Four and then one, uh, you know, over at the, the middle school or somewhere.
Yeah, you still need the middle school, I think.
Yeah, the middle school, but not the elementary school. Or maybe the elementary and not the middle, but, um.
Yeah, moving, moving it polling further east, yeah.
Right.
What are we looking at now?
Just that Wilderness Shores right there. Somerset, Wilderness Shores, that whole area.
Is the, is the elementary school still in your district now?
Co- yes, current, currently the, the ele- the, the primary and elementary school and the middle school.
But, but on this iteration, though, you would lose the, the two schools because they're, they're on.
That, that is correct.
You can keep the middle school but lose the primary or elementary.
Correct.
And I mean, that would be, if, if, if there was something in Wilderness Shores and then the, the, uh, the middle school.
Would be.
Those would be
Yeah.
pretty solid.
Yeah, they'd be the ideal, and I, I know that there is a community center over in Wilderness Shores, so, uh, we'd just have to.
Very big one, though.
No, but, um, you know, just have to check with Donna and see what accommodations would be needed.
Can you pull this back up?
Can I, can I say something, one, another thing?
Yes, please, good.
Uh, just when it comes to, um, and this is not specifically about polling places, but, um, I understand obviously that we're gonna probably end up with just five districts again, which is good. Um, when it, when it comes to splitting the districts, you know, into the three oh ones and the three oh twos and all of that, and choosing the polling places, um, the way it is now, and I know that the, um, populations are, are different, but when it comes to voters, um, it's extremely skewed between Unionville and Prospect Heights. Prospect Heights has like thirty four hundred voters, and Unionville has like nine hundred. Um, and my suggestion is if it's at all possible, because bearing in mind that you're not supposed to split precincts, and I am not a hundred percent clear on whether a town within the county constitutes a split or not. I have not gotten a clear answer on that, but we have two towns that we need to, that now both have elections in November. Um, so my understanding, I think, is that you can't have town voters in the same precinct as county voters. Does that make sense? The way it is right now, um, when the, the people vote at Prospect Heights in November, there are about twenty five hundred, twenty six hundred, um, registered voters that actually live in the town, and the other thousand live out in county. Up until now, it hasn't been an issue because, um, the town of Orange had their elections in May. So they were always separate. We never had to worry about it being split. Gornsville has always been split, because Gornsville has town voters and county voters. Um, but with this new law requiring there not to be splits, I think there's not a definitive answer as to whether it's not just about state and federal districts, but also at the town, um, level. So that might add a little bit of complexity into it. Um, but the Gornsville issue is probably a whole other thing, because there's only about nine hundred Gornsville voters and another like two thousand county voters that are in that precinct right now. But when it comes to District Three, I would suggest if at all possible, um, making the one district just, um, however you split it, just the town of Orange voters, and then the rest of District Three, everyone else who owns the District Three, if that makes sense. Um, so the way it is now, all the town voters would continue voting at Prospect, and everyone else would go to Unionville. I realize those polling places might actually change. Um, but that was my suggestion there, and then, um, I lost my train of thought. What would we, um, Mr. Crozier had said something about, um.
Accommodation. Wilderness Shores.
Oh, yes, um, the other thing, because in two thousand, I had just been appointed registrar in two thousand and ten, and I was left picking up pieces of redistricting. Um, there was apparently a lot of miscommunication between, um, whatever and the people who are in charge of the polling places. The schools were not really an issue, because obviously the county owns the schools and the taxpayers, so and all of that. Um, but some of these, um, firehouses and private, um, like, you know, the clubhouse and stuff, some of those, one in particular, I won't say what, exactly which one, there was not clear communication that we were gonna be using it as a polling place. Um, so I simply ask that, um, you all make sure that these places are aware that they are going to be used each and every time we have an election. Um, because I ran into, um, a problem going into the November of, um, two thousand and eleven election. I'm scrambling at the last minute. It ended up working out, thankfully to a couple of pollers of mine. Um, so it's just something to bear in mind, um, because it's, it, when you're preparing for it, you're assuming these people know. I mean, yes, we contact them now, but when they're first chosen as a polling place, um, I just request that they are aware that they are chosen and agree to be it. Um, I think we might not have been with you. There was, we may need to come up with some sort of, like, polling place contract or, uh, something of that nature with these places so that we don't run, we do not currently have any of that. I don't know if you all were aware of that, but I think there's probably some legalities involved in that as well, too. Um, and, um, I was kind of waiting until we just took them to a first act, so.
It would be nice to have an agreement with those places that require them to give us notice if they want to discontinue in sufficient time for us to comply with our own legal processes to
Right.
give notice to the public and move.
Right, right. We've been fortunate so far that, um, we haven't, you know, since that initial, there have not been any, uh, any issues. And, um, everyone has been, uh, more than accommodating and very easy to work with, but it's just something to think about going forward.
Uh, another question I have, um, Tom had said something about five percent was acceptable, but ten percent was pushing it, um, as far as the number of the population. Um, what I was curious about is currently District Four, even with this, uh, iteration that we've gone to, that population is already about two hundred residences more than what the census is showing. Would it make any sense to bump that line even farther east, um, or just leave it the way it is?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I had, I, I wasn't aware of specifically what you're saying, but I am aware of other things which possibly might happen down in District Four. And, and wondering if, if, if we should set a backfire there, um, but, you know, when you try to see around corners, then that gets interesting, too. But, yeah, I mean, you're thinking about moving the, uh, the District Three line, uh, moving it east?
Yes, yes, that, I was just wondering, because, uh, Wilderness Shores alone, uh, between that and Germana Heights, I believe we're looking at already, uh, at least two hundred, um, if not more, and then with.
We might take those thirty two, uh, uh, on the east side of Route Twenty away from you, too.
Well, that's a very good likelihood. It would just, it would have less impact next time around.
Oh, yeah, they, that way, two. That was actually a joke.
Nice straight line.
Well, it's about twenty.
Yeah, that's one against the line. Nice straight line.
These, we, we just have to figure out, uh, we, the, the, the only issue with that, Jim, is that we, i- if we just take it and dump them from four to three, then three gets bigger, and so then we and I'm not pushing, but I'm just saying then we probably.
Right, then we still have to do the others. Now, I understood.
We may need to move something else around.
Right.
I, I bet you Lake of the Woods, uh, since this was, has added another thirty homes. Just in the, even Lake of the Woods.
Right, okay, but, but best off just to leave it like this, then?
Well, I mean, I think, I think it's, uh, no, I, I think we could bump it a little, but I think we could fight with that. I don't, I don't think there's any, but we, we just have to understand when you take from one.
It, it changes.
Then, then you change, you know.
If you're giving it to District Three, it's already up a little bit.
Yeah, District Three is already.
But you could, you could give that corner to District Two, which is the smallest.
That's right.
And that would just, you know.
How many, how many, uh, was the population that little corner?
Forty, was it?
Thirty, thirty two.
Thirty two.
Thirty thou.
So that would raise you by thirty two.
For.
Yeah, thirty two.
We put it in seventy two.
And that would, that would take them away from Jim. Right.
Push District One a little bit further east. If you push District Three.
District Two could take the extra one, so it's not really a problem.
Yeah.
Cause I, I think seventy two, seventy two twenty five actually may be the, the magic number, I'm not sure.
Seventy two twenty four is what I got.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So you're saying District One?
Is perfect.
Is perfect.
So what's new? He's been saying that all along.
If you add, if you added a hundred more to to, to, to sort of one and two.
Well, the problem is
Then.
if we're, if we're trying to keep two below Route Twenty,
Yeah.
then that starts to lessen your, your options.
Yeah, this probably wouldn't work next round because.
But I mean, even that thirty two switch, it's, it's at least, it's dropped, District, District Four is now the smallest district.
Which is kind of a goal, so. Which is where the potential for growth is.
Yeah.
Well, and, and even the growth, since the census numbers were taken, it, it's, it's no, it's, it's enlarged.
In reality, you're probably the bit, the largest district, but
Right.
what we're, what we're seeing on the screen is the smallest.
Right.
Yeah.
These are some pretty clean boundaries.
These are some pretty clean boundaries.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the narrative that exists, it's on the website now describing our voting districts. And good luck deciphering all of that.
Oh, yeah, it's like a nineteen oh five survey.
Yeah, one, one of the boundaries.
The pi trate of the.
It's a creek that nobody's ever heard, it's a, it's a stream that no one's ever heard of. It took me a couple of years to find it.
That actually looked better like that anyway.
Yeah. It was. Mostly horsepin.
Horsepin.
Pin turn or something like something.
Yeah, horsepin road and the creek that runs between it and Sunnyside.
That's where it is.
Yep.
That's the area. You and I shared that, I think.
Yes, we do.
We did.
Until Mark got a call.
I think you put it in solid.
I, you know.
Jim, the tool is so good.
Yeah, it's all hand used, I mean. Would you have to still do that little crazy language?
Yeah.
When I, when I looked at it, I just looked at my end.
Meets and bounds.
I added all that to District Two.
Well, there'll be, there'll be some.
All, all that, but it's a little bit cleaner. I mean, it, it's also helpful when you're talking to constituents.
You can ask them, in my case, you know, do you live which side of Route Twenty? And that sort of begins to narrow the conversation a little bit. Because they can't do that before.
Yeah. Anybody, anybody who works with Route Twenty, you can kind of brush them off.
I got it. Call this number. What, what is the boundary between one and two on that? Is there a particular road that you had in mind there, Mark?
Uh, no, I was just going by census blocks. So I think that's actually.
This is.
Monrovia.
With that little red.
So that's Monrovia in part.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, is that a road across the neck of that?
Yeah, it's Monrovia that comes. Where, we, right there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so what is that, how much, what's the population there versus the other side of, down on the other side of, move, move further east on the block? But if you were trying to come up.
Look at that, there's a couple odd shaped blocks.
Yeah, and there's, and there's, you come across blocks that suddenly have like three hundred people in it. And that, that upsets the apple cart.
You can't do that, okay.
And then what after Monrovia?
I think it's Mountain Track. I think it's Mountain Track where it comes down.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Well, that's still a clean boundary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's crooked enough to be Mountain Track.
Yeah, this is, uh, Mountain Track is, there's both of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Here's Mountain Track. And then, yeah, here's Mountain Track.
Yeah.
And this is according to this layer, this is Cook's Creek.
Well, what's the, what's the east, what's, what's the up and down boundary back, back where you were there?
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is that? That's probably a creek.
Let's see.
Go a little closer, I think it popped up.
That may be my new horsepin. That may be Madison Rock. Could be Madison Rock.
Could be.
It's in the air, in the vicinity of Madison Rock.
Yeah. Let's see. Looks like you got a tree line in there, so could be. Yeah.
A short line or something.
Yeah.
We'll probably need to, it'll be beneficial to add in the waterways so it's a little bit more visible, which is something we can definitely add in for refinement.
Yes. And then this is Beaver Creek Road. And then, and, uh, out of the county.
The road we were debating a few weeks back, I annexed that in District One.
I, I see.
You were just forewarning me without forewarning me that you were forewarning. I saw that land grab coming. Sorry, I told Mark for years that pretty soon his, his boundary is going to be five twenty-two.
I'm inching closer to that all the time.
So get used to that color, boys.
They wore their shirt, it matches.
Yeah, the red tide is coming. Well, I, I, I would again ask you if you could print out copies of all of these and get it to the five of us so we can kind of look at these.
Absolutely. I'll print out an iteration of what we have here versus what.
And maybe do it on a large enough piece of paper, sure we can. With the help of a magnified glass, be able to read it.
I'd like to take a minute, make a couple of comments, one of which I made to Jim earlier. What he's developed for the county and the way the capability using the GIS tools over the past couple of years is pretty amazing. Look, the discussion we had today is just one example in terms of the capabilities of that tool. He, he's been involved with the Broadband Authority, as, as most of you know, helping support some grant applications and things. And I, I thanked him earlier.
Key contractor where all the lines are.
It, it, we were, we would not have been able to prepare the grant in the way that we did without those tools because the, the key information that we needed were lengths of roads, number of households along those roads, distance off the road for those households, population within that, all of these kind of things, which are capabilities of the tool set that he's put together for us. And so I just want to first thank you and, and recognize that you've, you've made a mark. And it's, it's been, he's really revolutionized what we've been able to do, frankly, and in this case as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, do you think the, you're going to keep the middle school as one of your polling places, even though it's at the edge of your?
Yes, I, I think it'd be very important to keep that as a polling place because there's really.
If you move it, I'm going to get the complaints.
Right.
We will, too.
But no, I'd say there, and if we can work something out with Wilder to Shores.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That would be the other one.
And then actually, I'm not sticking my nose into another district, but it may be that the one problematical precinct, you know, may be eliminated.
Yeah, I'd like to learn more about what, what issues.
With my run.
My run.
You know what it is? It's like, it's through the parking lot, you know, the main parking lot is gravel and there's a little like just concrete pad for somebody to park who's handicapped. And I don't think it's very visual. I don't think it's easy for people to know.
Typically, when, when they, they, they reserve a spot there and those that need to can pull up right beside that little sidewalk, which is only fifteen feet long or something like that. And then, you know, get out or typically the poll workers come out and stay in their car. I mean, you're.
Yeah, there's, there's two handicapped spaces that could definitely use to be remarked.
And there's a, a little bit of a lip where you go into it. I haven't been out there in a couple of years. I'm assuming it's the same because, you know, they vote in the bingo hall.
Right.
Right.
And they use the, you know, that side door, you don't come in the front. And there's, when you open that first door to get into the building, there's a little bit of a, a lip. Um, and that is a, it's a trip and fall.
Plus the door is narrow.
Yeah, the door is very narrow. We actually bought a threshold ramp to go over it. And I'm not a hundred percent sure that the election officers put that down all the time, but it is set out to it to try to help people not trip over it. It's not a huge lip, but it's enough that, um.
Maybe we could look at, at, at either moving it or as Tom suggested, we can improve it.
Right, because it wouldn't be that difficult, I don't think, to even put in a wider door as well as reconfigure the entryway.
Yeah, I mean, you look at it on that map, it's, it's location is, is pretty central. And it, it'd be nice to stay in that general area because the other one, you have Unionville and Lightfoot, right there on five twenty-two, just together. And it's, it's reasonably good access to those. Not many other choices.
You're also going to pick, well, you are going to pick up the elementary and middle school. They'd be.
Yeah.
So, but that's for you all to work out.
Well, if Jim and Jim don't have any issues, I'm pretty happy the way I'm, I'm set up there.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to look at it more, but overall, I think this is the most sensible layout. People at least can figure out where they actually live, unlike our current districts.
Because I don't have to change polling places. I don't have to change yet.
And it is all about these, so you know, that's.
But just, these two guys are happy, and I'm going to be happy.
The biggest issue with District Two is just, it's, you know, it's a lot of area.
But somebody's got to do it.
But somebody's. That's why it is.
You don't have a, you don't have.
Town.
Okay.
All right, well, if, if, if we're good to go with, with this for the moment, Jim can get us some hard copy so we can look at it.
Can you do an overlay of the? I think, the other thing, take over all districts on, on that, is that something's available to you?
I can look into it.
I'd just like to see how much, how close that would.
An overlay of what?
The state, federal, congressional and, and House.
As of today?
As of today, just to see what, is there immediately something that, that looks like a problem? I don't think there is. I mean, the state senate.
Well, we're all in the, in, in a single district at every level, so.
There is no.
Yeah, there is no split.
So we, so we don't, so waiting on them to do something.
Yeah, so unless they split us, we're, we're okay.
I, I would like to get an idea of what our timeline is for approval in terms of the appropriate public hearings and, and all the delays and opportunities for public comment, so we know at this point when, when we need to make the final decision on this.
Well, I suggest we don't do anything before the election because we're going to introduce some confusion. You start.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we need to, but after the election, I mean, can we go to December first or, we got to really come back to our deadline with all the required public notice times and stuff like that. So we just get a, a, a deadline date that let's say by fifteen November, we have to be, we have to propose something or a particular board meeting.
Want to answer that?
What's that?
Yeah. I'm going to answer it two ways. I'm going to tell you what the deadlines are. We, we have two ways to approve this. The, the most efficient way, we no longer have to pre-clear with the DOJ, but we can pre-clear with the Attorney General's office. They have sixty days to review it, so. That takes us back to, you know, to thirty-first. So the other process is probably even worse. It says we have to advertise it for forty-five days. It, it says we have to advertise it through press releases, websites, news articles. Then we have to have a thirty-day public comment period. And if we change anything, we have to reset another fifteen-day public comment period. So the fastest way will be the AG office, and that's a sixty-day window. Now, having, and the deadline is December thirty-first. Now, having said that, I'm not giving any advice here, but the Virginia Constitution says if we fail to perform our duties and do it by December thirty-first, a citizen can sue us and order us to do it. So there's no. I'm not saying anything, but you know. But technically, to comply with the law, we need to have the AG's office really end of October.
Well, to give them, to allow them the full sixty days.
Allow them the full sixty days.
Yeah.
And the way it works under the new state law, if they don't respond within sixty, it's approved. Oh.
Yeah.
But if we thought that there would be voter confusion, which you'd think that they would think about these things at the state, you'd like to think, what, what would be the downside of us waiting until the election's over and then following whichever process we want? And we'd, sure, we'd be past December thirty. I know you can't give us any advice.
I'm recommending.
Counter to the law, but who cares if we get it approved in January versus December? I mean, come on. As a practical matter, what, who does it hurt? It actually helps the voter not get confused.
Well, I don't know how, I mean, yes, everything you just said, but I, I also am not sure how big of a confusion issue it is because we're, if we adopt it in October and send it to the state, that the average person is, is, we're not going to send out mailers talking about it or whatever.
It is for the future.
Yeah, but if you're moving polling places and all sorts of things as part of the process,
it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect this election at all.
We have an October.
I know that. How do you have, we have a.
Maybe we put big red red stamps, this has nothing to do with twenty twenty-two election.
We put it on. I mean, this is something we're going to send to the state. This is not.
Right, but we, y'all, you will have to vote on it, so you don't want the agenda marked clearly, this is for starting twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, right, okay. Well, you answered my question, but, but big red marks on the agenda.
Or just big giant, giant warning signs, this doesn't apply this year.
We have an October twenty-sixth meeting. If we approve it at that stage, that's, it's still close to the election, but not so close as the people, you know. And then we'd end up with, we have a December twenty-first meeting.
What, what is the, what is the actual? I'm going to be, I'm going to put on my, my wannabe lawyer hat here. I mean, what does it say has to happen by December thirty-first?
That the new districts have been adopted? It says new districts shall be adopted in every year that.
When we vote on it, isn't that adopting them? And then it's just up to the AG to, to.
No, because the AG could say it's not good.
Well, we still adopted them.
Yeah, I, that's not everybody's interpreting it, but I'm, I'm okay with that.
Our lawyer is supposed to be looking for a loophole for us.
I think, I think you found it.
If we, if we, if we submit this thing after our October meeting and we don't require any public hearings?
We, you have to do it by ordinance, so you still have to do a public hearing.
Okay.
Because if you, if you look at our current code, it's an ordinance that lays out the precincts and the districts and all of that.
So if we want to do it on October twenty-sixth, and we have to have forty-five days, we're already too late.
Probably advertise it.
Well, not quite, but pretty close to it.
Well, that's why.
There is not forty-five days if we submit it to the AG.
Again, that's why I, I think every other locality is going to the AG and I think probably nobody's going to get any answers. I think.
But we still have to have a.
Sixty days drawn.
Okay.
But we still have to have an ordinance change.
Yes.
An ordinance change requires what, forty-five days or thirty?
No, just a two-week to advertise. Just two weeks of advertising.
So we could advertise it in early October, have it be on the, on the twenty-sixth.
To the AG's office.
Send it to the AG office.
That seems to me to be the smart way to do it.
Okay. I just think we need to clarify that before we.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm nervous about having a lot of this kind of discussion in, in the public two weeks prior to the elections. It reminds me some discussions I had already with some of my constituents.
We just continue to mention throughout the meeting that, that this does not apply to next week's election.
We can try.
And we can include that language in the, in the advertisement, like in the newspapers.
I, I guess I don't really understand what other option we have.
We don't have much.
Certainly we don't. I, I just.
Well, I mean, we're up against it with the, this delayed census.
But now, if, if we track.
Usually you got, once it wants to do this.
I mean, every ten years, something sort of like this happens.
Well, the alternative is to do it a little bit earlier.
Well, and that's what.
It takes some more time. I'm just worried about the, you know, the week before the, the November election, we, we start stirring the pot.
When, when would these new districts take effect? January one?
Yeah, they would take effect, the, the state law doesn't allow a district to take effect in the sixty days surrounding the election, so.
So it would be January one?
Effectively. They would advertise that this, this would be effective as twenty twenty-two election.
Well, I mean, the, the election this year is on the second. I mean, and see, I kind of think about it differently. Say, for me, if we do it that close, I don't think most people are even going to know about this. It takes people a while for rumors to get spun and.
That's right. That's why, that's why twenty-sixth, it's close enough. The, the one thing, and if we, if we go ahead and advertise it and we get two hundred. It's close enough. The, the one thing, and if we, if we go ahead and advertise it, and we get 200 people in here complaining about a particular line, we could make the change that evening if we're so inclined and still then submit it, whatever we, whatever we adopt at the, to the AG.
What are our limitations on that?
Well, one thing you could do, which I don't know if we did it here, but I did the redistricting for the CEO of 2010, is we submit it to the DOJ alternative. So you could theoretically maybe advertise three alternatives and then vote that night which of the alternatives to adopt, or you could make an amendment that night as long as it's not significant. I mean, if you, if you move the line, you say, okay, forget it, we're not gonna use Route 20, we're gonna use a whole bunch of critics and strains, and that's probably too significant a change. As long as it's a minor change.
But we're moving one, uh, one, 200-person census block or 100 census block to.
Where the little note with the 32 people, or, you know, yes, those are the minimums, those are minor, minor changes, and we'll be fine.
So I know we have to change polling places by ordinance. Are we planning to do that during this timeframe and process? Or should we do that separately outside of the district process?
Well, the whole thing needs to be reviewed because the, the state defines a covered practice. There's a whole list of things that are covered practices, so we have to clear all covered practices.
So we have to identify the polling posts.
I believe I'm reading it, man. But I believe so, yes.
So we need to.
Any change that reduces the number or consolidates or rela, relocates polling places. So if we don't change any polling places, we're okay, but if we change any.
But we're talking about.
We have to change.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna change.
Right, so then that has to be included when we send the AG.
Well, yeah, yeah, at least one's gonna change.
Yeah.
Then I also mentioned the point that when we last did this, the, that meats and downs piece in our ordinance was done by the regional commission. So we haven't looked into who might do that for us, whether they hired a surveyor or whatever, so we need, we'll try and track that down to.
Or if the polygon stays.
The polygon polygon.
Yeah, include, yeah, like.
I mean, if we could use those and use the, just a map exhibit, then we'd be golden. The question is, is that a legal solution, or do we have to describe it?
Call that, this law right up of what our, what our district boundary is.
Yes, and you gotta use the word thimbs several times.
Thimbs along the fence line. And we know that the law did allow us to change the boundary between Spotsylvania and Orange to, to, to a different method. But I don't know whether it has for election districts.
And the other question is, is that boundary actively reflected in the census block as well?
Hence, it would become a problem.
You had to bring it up. I, I thought about that a while ago when I saw that nice straight line between Orange and Spotsylvania, I said, that's not straight anymore.
Oh, true, the census, yeah.
But I don't, I don't, but my guess is the census has no awareness.
Yeah, you've got no idea about that one.
Yeah, the effective numbers would be.
The minimums.
I, oh, I think so.
The minimums on my, on my.
Well, one of the things, if you remember, we drew the lines so that nobody would change where they voted.
Right.
Or pay taxes, for, for, for most part, yeah.
Okay.
But I'll tell you, every year I'm at a polling place, and somebody that should be voting in Gordonsville shows up at Lightfoot, or somebody shows up at mine run that should be voting at Lightfoot, and I, I mean, it's, it is remarkable, but it, and they are not epicambers.
Okay, is there anything else we can do at this point, or are we? Are we?
I think we're.
We're good to go from now?
Never actually.
Okay. Okay. That's good. So we will recess for 10 minutes.
Cole, can you pause the livestream, please?
Everything?
You have to tell me how old that is.
This is new. Cole, we're ready to receive the last train, please.
I'll give you that. You seem to be chairman of my first year.
All right, well, that's a day to go.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we didn't have to do all this stuff.
Definitely ready.
Okay. All right, we will call the meeting to work. Please join. First, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our beloved Chairman Crozier is with us remotely. And Jim, I guess, do we need him to give his information again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jim, if we could tell us where you are?
Yes, I'm thirty-three, Pier Point, New Bern, North Carolina.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Johnson, I have a request to add a calendar item. This will be under thirteen, calendar A. And it will be a budget amendment for the Orange County Public Schools that exceeds the one percent and invokes the public hearing requirement. And Ms. Bradley has shared with me that it is for their reappropriation funds as well as their ARCA funds.
Okay. Any other changes?
Motion to approve as the document amended.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we move to the special presentations and appearances. And first up, we have the lifesaving awards. And Supervisor Frame is going to take care of that. Ted, you have something to tell us.
I do. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On the morning of August fifth, twenty twenty-one, Deputy Randy Amos was moving inmates from the Circuit Court back to the holding cells. Upon entering the hallway outside the holding cells, an inmate began to lean against the wall, holding his head. Deputy Amos asked him if he was okay, but received no response from the inmate, who then collapsed on the floor. With the assistance of Control Room Operator Robert Kelly, Deputy Amos was able to get the other inmates into the holding cells as he quickly checked for a pulse and breathing. There was no pulse, and the inmate was not breathing. Deputy Amos instructed Mr. Kelly to call nine one one and to notify the other bailiffs to get the AED and come assist. Deputy Amos then began performing CPR. Soon thereafter, Sergeant Mike Garrison and Deputy Don Hawkins arrived with the AED. Deputy Hawkins began hooking up the AED while Sergeant Garrison took over performing CPR. Ultimately, the inmate was revived before EMS arrived and transported him to a hospital. If it was not for the quick actions of these employees, the inmate would have died. It is with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that we present these lifesaving awards to Deputy Randy Amos, Orange County Sheriff's Office, and Sergeant Mike Garrison, Orange County Sheriff's Office.
I am really pleased to be able to do this. So many times, the public's interaction is when with the police force or the deputies who say, can I see your license and registration? And but we know that the deputies here in Orange County really do take this protect and serve motto very, very seriously. And they are doing great things for all of us, and a lot of people aren't always aware of it. So things like this is a chance for making the public aware of how much you guys do mean to us and how important you are to our safety. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Good job. Mike, thank you both, I guess. I got a good picture here.
Great, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back you go.
Good job.
Okay, next up is our business spotlight, and we have Kim Adamson here, owner of Missy Louie Sweet Treats. Ted, you have something to tell us.
I do. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On the morning of August fifth, twenty twenty-one, Deputy Randy Amos was moving inmates from the Circuit Court back to the holding cells. Upon entering the hallway outside the holding cells, an inmate began to lean against the wall, holding his head. Deputy Amos asked him if he was okay, but received no response from the inmate, who then collapsed on the floor. With the assistance of Control Room Operator Robert Kelly, Deputy Amos was able to get the other inmates into the holding cells as he quickly checked for a pulse and breathing. There was no pulse, and the inmate was not breathing. Deputy Amos instructed Mr. Kelly to call nine one one and to notify the other bailiffs to get the AED and come assist. Deputy Amos then began performing CPR. Soon thereafter, Sergeant Mike Garrison and Deputy Don Hawkins arrived with the AED. Deputy Hawkins began hooking up the AED while Sergeant Garrison took over performing CPR. Ultimately, the inmate was revived before EMS arrived and transported him to a hospital. If it was not for the quick actions of these employees, the inmate would have died. It is with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that we present these lifesaving awards to Deputy Randy Amos, Orange County Sheriff's Office, and Sergeant Mike Garrison, Orange County Sheriff's Office.
I am really pleased to be able to do this. So many times, the public's interaction is when with the police force or the deputies who say, can I see your license and registration? And but we know that the deputies here in Orange County really do take this protect and serve motto very, very seriously. And they are doing great things for all of us, and a lot of people aren't always aware of it. So things like this is a chance for making the public aware of how much you guys do mean to us and how important you are to our safety. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Good job. Mike, thank you both, I guess. I got a good picture here. Great, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back you go.
Good job.
Okay, next up is our business spotlight, and we have Kim Adamson here, owner of Missy Louie Sweet Treats.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kim Adamson, and I am the owner and head baker of Missy Louie Sweet Treats. I am located at one five two Caroline Street, right between Orange Tire and Advance Auto. And I hope to see you guys soon. Want some samples, but I didn't know that this many people were sitting on the boards, only what, five? But if you guys.
No, Jim does it. That's right.
So if you guys want to share that sign, if you guys want to stop by, you can stop by and pick up a free sample. Well, my business is basically built off of faith. I've done this out of my house for three years. And my dad recently, he had gotten sick, so I moved home. So I was doing it out of my home here in Orange. And when he passed away, I was like, okay, so it's now or never. If I just, you know, have to step out or if I want to still do it at home. So I was looking at this building, and I had been looking at it for months and months, and it was vacant. It was just calling my name, and I was like, no, I'm not going to do it, I'm not going to do it. But I said, yes, you are. So I stepped out, I obtained the building, went in there, and I've been open since April. It has been a struggle opening during the pandemic. I mainly do sweet treats. I offer bread items on Fridays, just because, you know, there is a, I guess, a market for bread here and there, but not that big. But I just offer it. But I normally do sweet treats, cupcakes, cookies, brownies. Birthday cakes, specialty cakes are on, well, your specialty cakes and birthday cakes are upon request only. I am the only person in there, so it's just like a one-woman show. My goal is to obtain enough revenue to hire at least two people because I want to stay open longer than I am open. But with just being me, it's just not, it's not feasible at this time. But I just look forward to seeing each and every one of y'all. I want to see, you know, more foot traffic come through. So right now, I'm just, you know, sustaining on the foot traffic, but on my volume as like online sales. So that's where I get the bulk of my, that's where I get the bulk of my orders, is online, catering, jobs and such and so forth. But yeah, I jumped out and, you know, I'm glad I jumped out. I lived in Culpeper previously, and people was like, are you going to open in Culpeper? And I said, no, I'm coming back home. Orange, this is something I feel like Orange has needed. There hasn't been a bakery here in Orange since I was a little girl. And I remember the first bakery, I think, was, that I can remember, was on Main Street. And I do remember, my grandmother worked there. It was short-lived, but I want mine to be long-lived. Like I said, I think this is something that Orange desperately needs, is something that, you know, can provide something other than, you know, your standard food line cake. My cakes are homemade, nothing is by box, everything is by, you know, everything is by scratch, you know. So I think that, you know, this is a great need for Orange, and I'm just here for it.
What are your hours?
My hours are Monday, no, I'm sorry, I'm closed Sunday, Mondays and Tuesdays. I'm open Wednesday through Friday, ten to five, and I'm open Saturdays, ten to one.
Do you have tables or beverages? Or is it all carry out?
I have beverages, I have tables, I have a lounge area where you can come in if you want to sit down. Doesn't matter how long you sit down and stay, I love the company. Like I said, I'm in there by myself mainly, so when company comes, it's great. But yeah, I have a lounge area, I have tables, chairs, have sodas. Right now, looking in the future of getting coffee, just trying to, you know, get more help that I can get, you know, so I can open earlier because I want to, there's a market for that early morning commute for coffee and muffin, you know, rum in. So that's my main goal, is to at least get me two employees under my belt so we can open it, so we can best serve the county and the town.
All right, well, very good.
And I do want.
Your online sales, are they pretty much local?
Um, no, no, they're from, they're from everywhere.
Really?
Yeah, they're from everywhere, from, well, from Fredericksburg, some come from DC, some come from Maryland, you know, Culpeper. They're all around, and it's all about, about word of mouth, you know. Somebody knows this person, that person. And I do want to point out and thank Orange County Economics for helping me obtain a grant for more equipment that's going to help me be more efficient in getting more orders out and, you know, more stuff that's, that I can put into my space. So I do encourage each and every one of you guys to just at least stop by, take a look. Guaranteed, you're going to leave with something. My brownies are, I think are fan favorite of everybody in Orange. Just, yeah, just come by, even if you don't buy anything, just come by and take a look and see what I, you know, have created for our citizens here.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for having me. And like I said, I did, I did bring some.
Yeah, you sent those right here. You got better locks than I did.
Some samples, it's only five because I didn't know how many people were going to be here. But like I said, you guys are welcome to stop by and say, oh, I didn't get a sample at the meeting, and let me know. And I'll have one waiting for you guys, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time. You're welcome.
I'm glad that she's got a lounge. I just got selected to the board, and it was a lounge right around the corner that I should go down there and spend, get a meeting in the morning and spend the afternoon there before a board meeting.
Right, yeah. Okay, Mr. Grab, you got a tough act to follow there.
I agree. I think my planning is always terrible.
General Grab, Executive Director of the Rapid Act Rapid Act Services Board, here to talk about the fiscal year twenty twenty-two plan.
All right, and I apologize for the length of the presentation that was sent to you. I promise.
Did you bring cupcakes?
I did not bring.
Well, make it short then.
You know, we have the catering business, and we just got out of our board meeting. And now that we're back in, our kitchen must make cookies for our board members, so I should have brought some cookies with me. I remember for next year, though, because it's always the same day as our board meetings as well. And so I promised to be short. I think, you know, obviously, I have to come annually to present accomplishments for our organization, present our budget for the coming year. And if there's any questions, then any members of your board, please interrupt me at any point in time I may could answer those questions. And just kind of publicly acknowledge our staff, you know, while much of the roles are found to last year we ever did. You know, we are core services to our community, and I can't tell you how proud I have been of our staff and what they've been able to accomplish in the last year. And I think you'll agree that, you know, as our board said when we presented our accomplishments of last year, I think what we accomplished last year would have been a really, really good year. The fact that we did it during a time of COVID, I thought was pretty exceptional. So, you know, from the COVID impact on us as an organization, we did close our concrete sites temporarily. Predominantly, that was our Orange Senior Center here locally. We also closed our day program for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We ended up retooling and greatly reducing capacity at some of the locations, although they are now back open. As a, because of the closures, we lost about a million dollars in fee revenues last year due to the concrete closing sites. What I'm most proud of during that time, we had no staff layoffs, we had no staff furloughs, we had no staff cut hours.
How'd you make up the shortfall?
PPO. Our offices in our clinics, we went and moved to predominantly remote-based work practices. During that point in time, our staff productivity remained very high. And I think more importantly, the lessons we learned during operating in this environment really set us up for the future very well. We did also see minimal staff transmissions and exposures. We had two, what I would consider very small outbreaks in any of our residential sites, both at the Boxwood Program, which is our residential treatment program, where people coming from all over the state. And those were very contained, which we are very proud of. So telehealth became a part of remote service delivery. We're able to, you know, meet with people who needed our care. Our no-show rate went down significantly. Again, really magnified the need for broadband in our rural communities.
Do you think you will continue trying to use the telehealth after the pandemic is over?
We absolutely will, yep. And the challenges that we saw on the telehealth side were much more on the client side. You know, people we support just at their end did not have the technology capability. We did flip some things, so we had spaces where people could come into our offices, use our equipment, and had our clinicians off-site. So we did set up a lot of those types of things as well. But for a lot of people, you know, I don't think people understand sometimes, but according to Medicaid and best practice, a telehealth visit is the clinical equivalent, is a face-to-face visit. So our concrete sites naturally transitioned to an outreach program. We made daily or weekly contacts with either seniors in our communities or people who were struggling with substance abuse, make sure that they had everything that they needed. Our senior centers converted their operations to home-delivered meal programs, and we delivered over thirty thousand, thirty-nine thousand meals to seniors in our community during this time. Additionally, we started hearing lots of reports about people who are struggling and being isolated in our community and offered what we called a resiliency series, which was a live hosted Zoom meeting with a couple of our clinicians to really talk about how to personally keep yourself happy, safe during, at this time. We, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five community members tune in live to our resiliency series, which we're really proud of.
Your thirty-five, nine thousand meals.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a significant jump because of COVID or just, because I know you do a lot on a regular basis?
On a, it is a significant jump in home-delivered meals.
Okay.
Now, our home-delivered meals program was typically sixty years of age and older to qualify for the home-delivered meal program. We would, we had much more flexibility in those requirements. So basically, if anybody called us and said that they were struggling, you know, for example, my wife runs the free clinic in Culpeper, we were dropping meals there for her, and one of her patients hurt at any point in time as well. On a typical year, we do about seventy-five thousand community meals. That includes the senior center meals. Again, I think this year was all about two, criminal justice reform, call for behavioral health assistance with local law enforcement. We, you know, obviously, had that call as well for us. We were able to pilot a project that was funded by our organization through the PATH Foundation, Culpeper Wellness Foundation, and the Greater Piedmont Community Foundation, where we were able to put a behavioral health specialist that rode along with law enforcement. And we have seen tremendous response from that program. At this point in time, we have two staff who are dedicated to those positions. We have two different models. One in Faulkeer County, where our staff sits in the sheriff's office, is connected to dispatch, and responds into the community, whether it's the sheriff office or the town police, and they assist law enforcement at that location. We're trying a different model in Culpeper, where our staff is actually in the car with law enforcement. And if there's a call that comes in, that patrol of our staff is there, responds to with law enforcement. If the situation environment is safe, our staff take the lead. I, we will be adding a second person in the Culpeper Police Department. The Culpeper Wellness Foundation, because of the positive results, just, of course, has appointed a second person. We will be adding more people through our Marcus Alert implementation program as well. And, well, what is Marcus? You can read the shared success stories, they're great to read. But part of our piloting the embedded behavioral health person really encouraged us to be early implementers locally of the Marcus Alert legislation. I won't make a comment on the legislation itself. I think the intent of the legislation is very good.
A silk purse out of a sow's ear.
Okay. I think it was very important, there were five community service boards who were chosen to be early implementers. We were chosen for Health Planning Region One. I think it has been a very interesting experience for us. We are the only multi-jurisdictional early implementer of the program. We are also the only CSP that serves rural communities. And I think that is really, for the rest of Virginia, there are some lessons that we are learning in that process.
Do you think there's going to be any feedback to the legislation to get the modifications that's there?
I would hope so. I think the, you know, it is, at its core, it's a criminal justice-based legislation. It has a very strong behavioral health, social justice component that goes along with it. I think the, I know for law enforcement, the reporting requirements, I think, are excessively burdensome. I think some of the protocols that are being acted on and being required by law enforcement, I think, are very, very challenging. I, I think it, like all things, I, I think the challenge became Virginia ahead of itself a little bit. There was a state steering committee that was created to help put together the parameters that would need to be put in place at the local jurisdictions. I think the formation and the membership of that committee put some stuff in place that I think was very challenging. So I'm trying to skirt, skirt an answer nearly, I do.
No, I've noticed that, I'm not a member of their, but I listen to a lot of their Zoom meetings. And, and obviously, people are trying to solve some very difficult problems with, I think, some constraints by the law and everything else that are not necessarily realistic. But I think they're really, they're really working very hard to make this work.
Is there a mechanism in place to give that feedback back to the legislators and regulators so that they
There is.
have information that works?
Yes, yes. So because we are a region that is early implemented of the system, you know, our state plan has to go in in October. I think the rest of Virginia that doesn't come out until next year, and some parts of the Commonwealth won't even be on for, I think, five years, it's a five-year rollout of the legislations. I think every step of the process, there is going to be a look back, assessment of what has been put in place. And I truly hope that there will be some modifications to the legislation, because I think it's necessary. I think, you know, I think the, I can't say enough about the change in law enforcement response when we have staff with them. Our biggest proponents, you know, I've been arguing for a couple of years here, we need to be the responders and get people diverted from the criminal justice system, get them into the behavioral system. It's a resource issue, there's a whole variety of really positive benefits to the community.
Well, one of the, one of the precepts is that we will save a lot of jail time. And I'm saying, I don't see that money transferring over to behavioral health. But.
We can talk about behavioral health spending all you want, because that's a nightmare. But honestly, I don't need to be the one who, like I said, we now have a privately funded second physician because law enforcement has said, has gone towards it. These guys are great. They make it so much more effective, the number of people. And like I said, there's a couple of success stories, but the ability to have someone who is not a law enforcement member diffuse the situation to avoid hands-on situations, avoid struggles, adverse actions, it keeps everyone safer. And law enforcement has said it's a perfectly well set game. They're resistive at the front end, and, and five or six months later, they're our biggest supporters of this goal in words. And I also think this is one of the best things that came out of the entire Marcus Alert. And again, I'm not going to read through these names, but we, as part of this group, had to establish a community collaborative plan. And this is the first time that I know that we had, we had Commonwealth attorneys on these groups, we had DSS directors on this group, we have sheriffs, we have law enforcement, we have community advocates, and really to talk about what is really, I think, a critical need in our, all of our communities. And we said, oh, people don't stop at your borders. So they have this group talking about how to solve these problems, I think, has been the most effective part of the legislation. We did implement a voluntary database, which is a requirement of the Marcus Alert, that every community has a voluntary database. I believe, if I'm not mistaken here, in Orange, you still use the Smart nine one one system, which also qualifies and meets that requirement. We have a separate voluntary database that is out there for people. We are also working with a web vendor to make it much more user-friendly. Again, the goal is to get information to first responders that will be helpful to them as they come out of town now.
One of the things you might mention is this whole, the steps that you're talking about when somebody calls into nine one one, can they shift them over to nine eight eight? And what, what the various steps are in this program that, that, that keeps us from getting into a tough situation with police only responding?
Sure, okay. And you'll see both point two or three down there, that's where the regional crisis call center. So right now, if someone is in a crisis in our community, they call nine one one, and law enforcement dispatches to the scene. What the entire behavioral health system is trying to be predicated on, which is woefully underfunded to fully accomplish, but is to divert those calls at a variety of stages so that law enforcement doesn't need to respond. And it's called the Crisis Now Model. But really, at the first point of contact, when that call comes to a dispatcher, Virginia will, is implementing regional crisis call centers, where that dispatcher can get that call and, kind of very short, kind of instantaneously, if it's a call that, you know, a parent calls, my son is upset, he's got some behavioral health issues, he's been off his meds. um kind of very short, kind of instantaneously, if it's a call that, you know, a parent calls, my son is upset, he's got some behavioral health issues, he's been off his meds. That call can go to a a regional crisis call center where they have trained clinical staff who will assess that person on the phone. And based on their assessment, there is a assessment called the locus, that person is graded a zero, one, two, three, or four. And at the zero level, okay, that crisis call center will divert that family to a peer support counselor, a warm line, a support line, and again, it's, law enforcement's never been dispatched. At level one, if the 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 assessment says that that person needs some form of intervention, but they're not an imminent threat to themselves or others, there's a mobile crisis team that can be dispatched. Again, law enforcement doesn't need to go, um but someone needs to go to kind of stop that chain of events from escalating to a point that law enforcement's gonna need to go. If it's a level three, levels, or level two, zero, one, two, with third level. Um then you're really looking at those embedded behavioral health. Do we have a embedded crew that would be available? So that's a, there's a level of risk, but we really need some sort of behavioral health commission to go as well. Uh the fourth level, which is number three, is the, there's an imminent risk, there's firearms, there's weapons, in which case it's a law enforcement response. And we can do that within United Eight Call Centers with the regional cross, almost instantaneously. Where calls will come in, they'll be diverted. Again, the goal being um prevent law enforcement from having to go out and respond to these calls. Let law enforcement do law enforcement's job. Um prevent things like, you know, if law enforcement goes, um it escalates the situation. The story I tell is, you know, the sheriff in Faulkeer County, a gentleman named Bob Mosher called me probably about a year ago. They had received a call uh from a family for a welfare check, and that's kind of a typical call that law enforcement now gets involved with. And he's, you know, his comment was, we got called, we drove up to the house, the person was sitting on the front porch. They saw that it was a uniformed sheriff's car, they went into the home, grabbed a firearm, and killed themselves. And the sheriff was a hundred percent convinced that if somebody else had pulled up that wasn't law enforcement, they could have had a very different outcome to that situation. And that's really how he kind of got very engaged in in looking at this behavioral health process. But that's really kind of the whole intent of the process is, can we get people to other services? Cause now if law enforcement takes that person into custody, they're gonna bring him to our assessment center. Um if there's no one there, we will take custody, we will hold that person through the ECO process. But if we have other people, we can only uh have one person in a time of custody. And your deputies are sitting in ERs for for, frankly, at this point in time, for closure of the state hospitals, it's been days. And you are drawing down all those overtime hours, it's, it's demoralizing for law enforcement, you have to sit in the ER with someone for two or three days at a time, waiting for appropriate um assessment from that.
So how large is your database?
Um right now, our database is very small. Um we are currently, and we might have twenty people in here at this point in time. Um we are currently, like I said, we we've met the requirements of the Marcus Law. Um we are currently finishing doing some um communications, um I wanna say rat cards, you know, things that we can put out in the community that people can have. They will have a scannable code, they will talk more about what benefits to this community. Um when those are finished, we're also gonna be running, um we have some money for advertising of this program. Uh so we're putting ads in local newspapers, those types of things as well, so the community is much more aware. Uh so we're absolutely just dipping our toe into that um database at this point in time, but we really hope by the end of the year that, you know, it'll be marketed completely, it'll be a large number of people. And then at that point in time, then really the goal is um dispatch has access. So if Bob Smith calls in and says, or an address, dispatch will know, and you can put that information, you know, my son, um whatever you want to put in there, it's voluntary information. Um you know, the, one of the examples I use, you know, I have a son who has an autism diagnosis. He will respond differently to noises and those types of things, right? So if law enforcement was ever called to my house, you know, if I'm an officer and I'm approaching someone, you know, he's a big young man, he's thirty years old now, but he's a big kid, right? And so if you're law enforcement and you were to approach him, and you're shouting at him or a bright light, he might not respond in a manner that you would be typically accustomed to, right? And so as a police officer, you might respond, he's uncooperative, he's this, he's that, right? If you know going in, the gentleman at this house, oh, he has autism, he's probably, you know, you would just react differently and respond differently. And again, it keeps you as the law enforcement person safer, and it keeps the the person at home safer too. Um also, we have used um um part of the Marcus funding that we received to open the C Recovery Center. Um and I will be honest, the C Recovery Center is going to be a game changer for our community. Um and our community before, now we opened about August first, if the C Recovery Center, so we opened about a month now. Um there were no hospital beds, there are two community hospitals um for people with behavioral health needs. There were no crisis stabilization units, so your only option was um the emergency custody order, right? Custody of law enforcement, if you're assessed to need care, you were going to the state hospitals or some private hospital. Um the C Recovery Center, it's not open twenty-four seven yet. I think they're open till about eight o'clock at night, we're still ramping up some staffing. But will be an alternative. So if, it's a peer run with twenty-four seven licensed clinician staff. We have special staff there who are service veteran, uh military family trained. Um if a member of our community or law enforcement is engaging with somebody who needs to be out of the environment they are in, who might need to sober up, who just, you know, they're off their meds, they need a place to go and to be assessed. Outside of the hospital, the C Recovery Center will be a place that people can be brought in and receive an assessment. Um again, it's not the legal process of the ECO, but again, anything you can do to shut out the spiral and escalation process will be placed. So in the first two weeks, we had about five hundred people go through the door of the C Recovery Center.
Wow.
Um some other things that happened during the course of the year. So our board really also en- endorsed a very comprehensive prevention program. You know, our area is still an area with a very significant overdose rates. Uh and so our board spent a lot of its effort this year really looking at, you know, the best way to treat substance use disorder is to prevent the activities that lead to that. So, and you can read through all those types of things as well. Um just some other things, again, I I, we talk about the CSB and the aging services all the time. We're also the housing agency for the area. Um we currently have housing vouchers for over one hundred and fifty homes, providing affordable housing for people. We are the transportation provider, because there obviously is a great lack of transportation in different services. So we provide the transportation for um people with disabilities and for seniors. Uh Project Link, which is very active here in Orange, which is a a very intensive case management program to keep kids out of the foster care system. Um um again, we're working on the development of the drug courts and the Virginia Insurance Counseling Assistance Program. If you're on Medicare program, talk to one of our counselors, they will say you might need to make sure you're right Medicare problem. And this was a very off year for us. Um we only saved a hundred and seventy thousand dollars this year. Um again, I think we're excellent stewards of the resources that we are provided, provided, and our employees are, again, our most valuable resource. We did a lot of work on diversity, equity, and inclusion this year within the organization. I think the very positive results. Um we were able to provide employees with a one-time retention bonus uh for extra efforts downstream during the pandemic. And again, the payroll protection loan that we were able to secure this year really helped us um cover that million-dollar loss of fees and being able to make sure we kept our stamp holder in all this time. Um we did do a lot of reorganization. Um we got a ton of stuff going on, just reorganizing the leadership team this year. We brought on a new Director of Finance and Admin, our former CFO retired after thirty-three years of service to the organization. Um we have, I think, some collaboration with the Health Departments, we had early vaccinations for our staff and clients. Uh and you can read some of the other types of things as well. Um again, new programs opened this year, the C Recovery Center, which we touched upon. Um we did transition one of our residential programs to a transitional supervised living home to help with the state hospital bed crisis in place. Um we began at the credentialing program for adult support professionals. Uh we expanded our permanent supportive housing program, which is for people who are chronically homeless. Um and we are implementing a senior behavioral health support, cause our seniors are struggling as well with isolation at this point in time. Um again, and I'm not gonna go through all these, but if you have any questions, the C Recovery Center and some of the services that are provided there. Uh and us by the numbers. Um so the number on the left is the total number of people within our organization that we supported. The number on the right is our Orange County-specific residents um they receive. And from an organizational perspective, Orange County accounts about twenty percent of our our population base. So you can see where things kind of fall. Uh you know, we had a hundred and forty-six people who we see on an outpatient basis. Hundred and eighteen for our medical services, case management, and so on. Go through those numbers.
So is that a total of three hundred and ninety-six different people, or are some of these uh fit under more than one category?
For this grouping, um this will be three hundred and ninety-six different people. These are, I do look at people that I'm saying for this group. Um our development of disabilities, you can see a hundred and thirteen, no, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty-eight people. Um and you know, one of the things people don't think about much for us is infant toddler connection, where we do the very young children assessments, cause we're falling behind. Um we're typically three years of age. We did a hundred and thirteen assessments uh for those children and then got OTPT speech, those are good for them. Um again, substance use disorder specific services, they seem a very low number because most of the people we see have a dual diagnosis of a mental health and a substance use disorder, they're captured on the first slide. Um again, um um emergency services, you see, we did a hundred and nineteen um assessments of Orange residents in crisis during the last year. And uh how many just different assessments we do. You know, we we assessed a hundred and fourteen people with rapid access. Um we um mental health case management, eleven people when we go through those. Um housing, people that we support for Orange residents. And I just throw this one in there too, because we do do a lot of community prevention activities. Um you know, ACEs training to the early childhood, adverse childhood experience training, uh so on and so forth. You can see those numbers. And for our area agency on aging, we have about sixty members of the Orange Senior Center, we go to our individual cases. So we have the stuff that we do for seniors. Um again, our budget presentation, our board did establish goals for us, they want, you know, some of the bigger items. Um we're really improve our data and um report into the community, um and what we do as an organization. Um crisis response program, which we talked a little bit about with the C Recovery Center, and you can go through some of those types of things as well. Um and again, from a management priority perspective, as we created the budget, you know, we really wanted to take care of our staff. Um we wanted to make our board happy by doing what the board wanted us to do. Um but we have a lot of capital projects and some of those types of things that um came up this year. And additionally, any discretionary spending we have this year, really, we use to bolster our IT capability for the most part. Um and as such, this year's budget's just under thirty-two million dollars, and you can see where the the revenues come from. Again, about, we're in about ten percent for local share, which is the required match for our communities. Um in our budget this year, um our budget did go up about fifteen percent or about four million dollars. Um so in a one-year ex- uh expansion for us, that's a huge expansion of fifteen percent. And we go down, you can see the the different levels of where the revenue increases came from. And for people who like it graphically, there's some sort of pie chart. Um and where does our money go? Our money goes to staff. Um we're a human service organization, that's predominantly where our money goes to. Um and just some of the expense highlights, um we did implement a a basically a five percent salary increase this year for our staff. Uh we, because we are on short next fiscal years, um situation, we are doing it as a three percent salary adjustment for all staff with a one-time payment to employees of two percent of their salary in December. If next year's financial position looks favorable, we'll just roll that two percent into their base salary uh in assets made a year.
What's your total number of employees?
We are um, we are about four hundred and thirteen full and part-time, if I'm not mistaken. Um we did add seventeen full-time positions as well this year. Um and again, you can see some of the other expenses, predominantly vehicles, IT equipment, some of those types of things. Um we did, one of the things we're really happy about this year, we were able to put away fifty thousand dollars for development of a scholarship fund. Um Virginia is forty-first nationally um in um availability of um behavioral health um clinicians. Um we are, you know, if we say, oh, kind of our biggest problem is hiring qualified clinical physicians, they just don't exist in Virginia. Um and so one of the things that we put in, uh some money for this year is a scholarship fund that will be targeted to, we'll start with high school seniors, um is to start the graduate wait in the spring. Our goal is to provide fifty thousand dollars a year in scholarships, and we're, we have a terrible name for it, that we have to make better, we're now, we're calling it the World Clinician Program. Um and so our board hates the name, so we, but it would be five thousand dollar a year scholarships um for your first two years, um freshman and sophomore years. If you continue in a clinical-based pathway, it'll raise to ten thousand dollars a year. If you go into graduate school and a licensed program, it'll be fifteen thousand dollars a year. Um we guarantee employment upon um graduation if you've gone through our program. And we will also provide free um licensing supervision at that point in time as well.
How, uh, I mean, we talk about the shortage, and you talk about a lot of the places we're using throughout this. How are you doing in terms of being able to recruit sufficient clinicians?
Um there's never enough. We're doing better than else. Um we were able to um in the last two years, um we have gotten to a point where we're kind of leading the local market in clinician salary. Um so it's it's been very helpful for us frankly, um cause we we we're in that little void. Um you're cold to the north, I can't compete against their salaries. Um and here, and part of our, you know, we have predators we're pulling away, insurance we're pulling away. So being able to keep our people locally, we really just had to look at the the salary structure for those clinical staff. Um and again, nice to know where our money goes if you care about that stuff. Um quick announcements, we've returned to pretty much pre-pandemic operating practices on July first. Um again, telehealth continues to be an option. Uh we have brought on an Associate Executive Director, a woman named Cheryl Reinstrom, who started about three weeks ago. Um we talked about the scholarship program. We are currently doing a feasibility study on our Bradford Road office. If you've never been in our Bradford Road office, I will take you for a tour, and you will understand why we need a feasibility study on our Bradford Road office. Um we're currently, I'm working on a new website that we received a grant to develop a new website that'll be much more friendly to the community. Um next year also marks the fiftieth anniversary of us as an organization, and what we'll be doing in the next couple of months, a big kickoff and having a year-long um event of, I'm scared. Try to keep it short.
At least you tried.
We kept asking questions, you know, like.
Oh yeah, I didn't ask all the questions, I was like.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Jim, Jim Crocker, did you have any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, take care.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda approved. Your business, proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances regarding radon-resistant construction. Allison.
Yes, sir. Um sent to the board. In in front of you is a request um through the building official that I was asked to help present, and GW couldn't be at a meeting this evening, but um we were notified recently from the Virginia Department of Health, their Office of Radiological Health, that Orange County is classified in the high-risk or indoor radon levels. Um there's some bands that kind of go across the state that I included in a, in a map in your packet. Um because of the high-risk classification, um Appendix F of the International Residential Code is um permissible to be adopted into the local building code or our local Code of Ordinances. is permissible to be adopted into the local building code or our local Code of Ordinances. Said Appendix F would require that new residences be built with radon-resistant new construction techniques. That does include the installation of passive radon reduction piping. There is an illustration that was provided to us by the state that I also included in your packet. GW has shared that it is a common technique. A lot of jurisdictions already require it and most builders install it even if it's not codified into the local ordinance. It's my understanding that it's already being required by building inspections, although it's not codified in our ordinance. And so I did need to share.
Rules, how does that work exactly?
I needed to share that little nugget of information. But Tom has put together some language, which I did include in your packet as well after all of the background information, which is reflected on your screen. And it would just be the addition of Article 5 to our Buildings and Building Regulations Chapter 3 sections that are regarding applicability and then the new construction standards and the one exception in the Uniform Statewide Building Code. So GW couldn't be here, but putting that forward for your consideration. It wouldn't have to be adopted by ordinance, so action this evening would be to grant staff the authority to advertise for that public hearing.
What would it add to the cost of new construction?
I knew that question was coming. I couldn't get GW on the phone this afternoon, I did anticipate that question. But again, I couldn't get him on the phone this afternoon, so I will find out and, and pass that along.
It's typically $300 to $500.
Yes, three to $500.
Three to $500.
Three to $500.
Three to $500.
Yep.
Tom, what are the, what are the legal implications of the building department requiring something that's not required?
I, I would think they'd just be making strong suggestions, that's what we're doing.
But that's not what this is.
Yeah, you know, what would happen is if my push is back and they call me, I would say, look, it's not something we can do. I don't know if this is news to me. So, I mean, if I was asked, I would say, let's not do that.
Yeah, and your proposal, it makes it sound like if this is already something that's in the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code.
It is, it's an optional provision. The, the building code is a lot of optional provisions where you can, this is an optional provision.
I suspect that a lot of the designs, especially the big builders, they just, they just include it and require it.
Would it change the cost of permanence?
No, sir, there's not an anticipated adjustment to any sort of building rights.
Typically, if they're doing the passive, pretty much all they do is when they're building the house, they put a piece of four-inch PVC in and it's vented out through the roof.
Basically a basement vent?
Yes.
Crossface vent?
Yep, exactly what it is.
Basement's only, I think, I don't think it applies to cross.
Or slab, it doesn't apply to a whole one across.
Yeah, if the crossface is vetted, which most are.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, your trouble with this going to public here, I am bothered by the fact that we've been requiring something that's not required. I hope that's the only instance that that's been done.
If you're building that spec, I'll go back and see what, what is actually required and what not.
I guess I would like to know why, why they've been requiring that. Did they, did they think it was, is it misunderstanding or, and how long has it been going on?
We'll be happy to get those answers for you.
So do we need a, just a sense of the board to go ahead and advertise this?
Yes, because since this would be found, I would advertise for the first sale.
We're stepping forward, go ahead and advertise.
Okay, so Lee and I have said we're fine, is everybody?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Old business. Doesn't seem to be any. Department Director, Constitutional Officer reports none. County Attorney's report.
My break up the rhythm.
County Administrator's report.
Well, I know you can allow me to break up the rhythm, so. I don't have a lot, but I do need to inform the board that you'll recall that Ms. Bradley discussed with you the health of our, health of our health insurance fund during budget time. And some, as we talked about, one position that we were hoping to fund out of that and we said we would give you a prize. So just within the last few days, we received another billing report from our, our fund. And unfortunately, it was significantly worse than, than we've been seeing. So we just wanted to give you a heads up. We will be setting a meeting up with the Budget Guidance Committee to, to discuss this and see what sort of options we have. We're doing research to understand why that's happening. The quick and dirty on that is, is unfortunately, cancer claims that are just, just not anything we could have expected across multiple employees. So we'll, we'll get into that detail with the committee when we have the opportunity.
Okay. Next up is board comment. Does anyone have any board comment?
None here.
Mr. Crozier?
Uh, yes, I do have a little after that last little thing. That's all the more reason to adopt the ordinance for the passive radon vending from houses. Radon's a major cause of cancer and Orange County has a tremendous amount of it. So it might help our health insurance rates in the future.
I just have a, not really a comment, it's a, it's a kind of a, put out an idea and get support feedback on it. With everything that's happened in the last year, year and a half, the need for more recreational facilities has kind of reared its head. People are not going to movies and concerts as much. They're doing more in small groups, family groups. And Orange County has never been, we've never been big on a lot of parks. And I would suggest that perhaps this is a time that we should start to look at, at addressing that. We also have, I think we're in a pretty good position financially at this point. There's some funds available that could be used to address this. There, I've talked to several supervisors about this here and there. One idea, I think, is, is to try to set up some, some larger regional parks. We have a lot of acreage out on Mountain Track Road. We, we have some acreage at 522 and, and 20. And we have the potential for some acreage out on Route 3. If not there, we have some school property that perhaps could be used. And those would be kind of overlaid with the existing parks that we have, which would be Mr. Park and the Small Park at Barbersville. So I, I guess what I'm, what I'm really asking is, is the board interested in having perhaps the board committee and staff start to look at, at doing something of that nature and, and moving to, to open up some, some more outside recreation area.
Parks with ball fields and that kind of thing?
Well, I think, I think we certainly have one piece of property which is on Mountain Track Road, which could be, could be done. But for things like walking trails and those, those kinds of things, really kind of the broad, I don't think these, these wouldn't be like, we're gonna do, we're gonna do this and then we're gonna do it three other places. These would be kind of a variety of things depending on where they are and how much land we have and so forth.
What are the needs are?
Yeah.
Are you thinking of any more activity-related things through parks and rec? Or, or just, we're talking facilities in parks, open areas?
I, I think we should, I think we should approach this, in my opinion, we should approach this, the answer to your question would be yes. You know, look at, yes, more facilities at which in turn will allow parks and rec to.
Plan more.
To plan more activities. There's, there's been a, just in the last couple of days, there's been an issue where a person is, is unhappy about the offerings. Frankly, one of the reasons offerings are as limited as they are is because there aren't really facilities. Particularly with schools being pretty much, you know, shut down now for any kind of outside use, so.
Let me, let me maybe make a suggestion. I had an opportunity to visit the water park over there in Culpeper. And I was really impressed with it, you know. Of course, the water park is more designated through the summer months, but also they had some walking trails and things like that. So I was just taking the opportunity to go over and visit that. And it's, it's a big community, it, it really is. And I think anything we can do to kind of bring the community together and offer some of these opportunities, I think is a great thing.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, I know we've had discussions in the past about this and we've worked really hard to bring things, necessities to the community from, you know, over the past few years. And I think it absolutely is time to go ahead and start some citizen-oriented facilities. And I think all the suggestions that have been made, and I think a committee would absolutely be appropriate.
We've got about five or six parks in Lake of the Woods itself. And, you know, and they're, they're used regularly, so I would suspect that the rest of the county would like to have that kind of availability.
Yeah, I, I think that, that we should, should put in place a, a process and maybe borrow some, some things that we learned from the GWA planning process. For example, getting community involved, getting people that, that, from multiple organizations within the county that, that have stakeholders.
Like soccer leagues and football leagues and these others who are saying, you know, we don't have a place to do this. Or those, you know, or Tai Chi exercises or camp classes and stuff like that.
Well, I, I think it, it, it needs to be fairly comprehensive because I believe there are also going to be opportunities that as development takes place throughout the county, that we can include some, some provisions to sort of contribute to an overall plan that, that might exist for, for these kind of facilities. But I, 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 I think it is that something we start putting into our cap on program. Yeah, I, I think it's the next, one of, at least the next focus is that this board should, should take. Jim is right, we, we've done a lot in terms of the basic necessities and the public safety and these kind of things in recent years. Now, now turning that, that focus and that energy toward recreation and other kinds of resources, I think is a, is a good, is a good place. A lot of work to be done. One thing we learned about GWA was that it's, it is a lot of work. You really have to hear a lot of, a lot of voices and consider a lot of things.
I mean, we've had pretty much zero opposition throughout this whole GWA process since 2013. Now that we're getting some specifics, we're beginning to see some resistance, but I'm hearing things. The traffic's gonna be horrible, you know, okay? That's where it is, you know? Well, why can't they do that? They own property. It's their thing. We have a very strong property rights culture in rural Virginia, including Orange County. And that doesn't always dissuade you, but at least says, you know, we're not gonna fight it too hard.
So yes, Mr. Johnson, I'm 100% in agreement with you.
All right. And do we want to actually appoint a committee or how do we want to proceed on that? I think the next step might be to, maybe if you're willing to do it, you and the county administrator could sort of think about the, the organizations within the county, Parks and Rec being one, but, but there are others.
Looking at the capital assets that we have?
Yeah, and, and beginning to just, who are all the stakeholders that we would like to?
See what the community's looking for.
Yeah, I mean, something I, for to reach really high, I've heard about indoor pools to, to the build off of what you were talking about. And one of that, that's something within our.
We fought that, that thing at Lake of the Woods for 20, 30 years.
Yeah. We have a group that wants to, and fights real hard, but understand, and, and I threw that out there just as a, it's sort of a, the very expensive, high-end, which, which could be part of a longer plan, but not necessarily something.
Well, and the other thing is winter versus summer. Right, another consideration.
Ken, do you think maybe that's something you'd like to pull off?
We could certainly have a meeting and discuss that.
Okay. Have a meeting, there's. Maybe even a phone conversation. Problem solved. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I agree, I. The informational items are just that, there's no action required.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like.
Is there something you'd like to point out?
Just like point out the tax and fee schedule and thank Glenda for her good work and trying to pull that resource together. I think that'll be useful for the board on this instance.
It's a little bit scary that our tax and fee schedule is 947 pages long, but.
It's an office document.
I exaggerated a little bit there, but yes.
She said she's gonna put it on the website so everybody will know about it.
Okay. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, and there are a number of possible appointments this time.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Barnes to the Rappahannock Rapid End Community Services Board.
Okay.
I'd like to appoint Gene Ernst to the Social Services Board. Is that the correct title, Allison?
District 4 vacancy there?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
What, what was the name?
Gene Ernst.
Okay. Anybody have any objection to the, the Skylight Community Action Partnership going and doing that?
And I, I had reached out to their executive director and he was very supportive of her reappointment.
So I, I would move that we include her. And then we have the, the number of people on the Tourism Advisory Committee. If there's no objection, I would move that we include those.
And also Mr. Harding on the Airport Commission.
Okay.
And on Tourism Advisory Committee, I'd like to note Tim Buberry is also willing to continue serving. He did not have a note, but it would be all of the ones listed with the addition of Mr. Buberry if you're okay with that.
Okay. Do we add Tim to that?
Does anybody else have an interest in getting somebody on the Community Criminal Justice Board? I had a long discussion with the rep, who's not being, doesn't want to be reappointed and that.
Right. I would.
If not, I'll look for somebody.
Yeah, that's, that's fine for me. I assume Mr. McConnell is willing to serve again on EDA, but you could check with him.
Yes, Susan had reached out to both of them, but had not heard back at the time that I published the memo, so.
I can't believe that he wouldn't, pretty heavy into that.
But yes, we should have a response from Bob and Jack. But yes, we should have a response from Bob and Jack.
Okay.
On what their desire is, and then you all can take action by your next meeting.
Both of them have a lot of complications to that. And I've, I've spoken with Jack and he, he's interested. I haven't twisted his arm quite to a yes, we're almost there. Okay.
So that would take care of Mr. Herndon on Airport Commission. Mr. Barnes for the Community Services Board, Ms. Frederick for Skylight Uncap. And all of the Tourism Advisory Committee members, including Mr. Mubry. And Gene Ernst on Social Services.
And Gene Ernst on Social Services.
Yes.
Okay. Everyone in favor, signify to say aye.
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 All right, they are appointed as various boards and committees unanimously. Now we move to the calendar and we have a budget amendment. And Glenda, are you gonna speak to that or are we just, uh?
Just advertise the public hearing.
We're just going to, we just need to advertise that?
I can, um. As you probably remember, we did have a meeting with the schools, um, administration folks and this was back before the end of the fiscal year. Um, and so we were expecting a, uh, reappropriation request from them that was to include a lighting project and some classes. So that, the school board approved that amendment last night. And in addition to that, they approved an amendment for their ARPA funds, which are a little over five million dollars. So the combination, the reappropriation is now a million to something. Combination definitely over the one percent. Um, so I would like to try to schedule a public hearing, um, as, as soon as it's possible, um, probably the next meeting or the next.
Um.
But just to do both of those in one, so we.
Worst case, it would be October twelfth. I'd have to look, I don't remember if it requires one week of advertising or two for budget. I wanna say one.
I wanna say one too, but we can confirm.
Um, and then we, we could potentially get in on our next meeting, but it would be, either be next meeting or October twelfth.
All right, and that's good with everybody? All right, thank you. Okay, so it is now time for our public hearing. And first public hearing is, uh, for the Regional Cigarette Tax Administration. We will consider establishing the cigarette tax pursuant to the Code of Virginia. As part of the administration of said cigarette tax, the board will consider adopting an ordinance to join the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board for the purposes of delegating administration of the cigarette tax to said tax board. Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Uh, as you'll recall, um, we've talked about this a few times. Um, there was a preference by industry to, uh, guide localities, uh, to, uh, approach this through a regional, tax administration as opposed to having every jurisdiction in the Commonwealth have their own administration. Uh, and, uh, attorneys reminded us of this, that regional means six or more localities. Previously, uh, it was not, uh, the general authority of, of counties to be able to charge this tax, but, uh, over the years, Daco has worked to try to get the General Assembly to, to put counties on equal taxation footing to municipal governments. Uh, so, um, this is now an available, uh, source of revenue. We looked into what regional entities might be willing to, uh, take us on. Uh, and out of that process, um, we've, uh, essentially had the Charlottesville centric, uh, Jefferson Planning District, uh, picked this up as a, as a project. They submitted to us a draft ordinance for what this would look like and, um, and our local agreement. Uh, and, uh, that's morphed into the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board, so that's their, their preferred name. It's different than, than what we had originally, um, looked at, which I think was the Thomas Jefferson, uh, or some, some such name. Uh, they've also.
Just don't wanna be associated with the tax.
And they, they also, um, uh, amended the original draft that had the presumption that the, uh, local appointed official would be on board to, uh, essentially say that each local government could choose whoever they want to be on the board. So, so that's how, uh, it's drafted. The requirement is that we have a public hearing, uh, adopt the ordinance to, uh, establish and join. And so this is conditioned on at least six locality joining. Uh, most of them are all taking this up this month and next month. Once that were to happen, we would then, in order to actually have a tax, adopt another ordinance setting a rate. And that rate can be up to forty cents based on the statute. Uh, it could be, now that we've discussed this with the, uh, potential organization, it could be any rate that we choose. So there isn't a requirement that we, that we go, go with that number.
We can't go over that.
Well, we can't go over it.
Two cents a cigarette.
There are some jurisdictions that would be joining likely, uh, Charlottesville, uh, who can, can be over it because they're grandfathered. But one of the things that the group has talked about is there might be some benefits to having a uniform tax in the region. And, and possibly that generally applies to the Commonwealth. You don't have people shopping jurisdictions. But, uh, that, that's a, that's a future topic for us to discuss. The first threshold is whether you want to join the regional entity, uh, and, and that's the recommendation and the item that's for you this evening.
I think this is duly informed. I mean, this doesn't exist.
This does not exist. We would be a charter member.
But the city of Charlottesville does have a tax authority.
That, that's right, they're willing to join the regional group, uh, as a.
Thereby turning over some of the, uh, the administrative efforts to the Blue Ridge as opposed to doing it themselves.
Yeah, I think it'd be advantageous to, to do that.
The fact is they ought, they, they might be able to incorporate that, that staff already into it, if they've got separate staff doing it.
So do we need a vote here or do we just need a sense of the board to?
No, we need a public hearing.
Go call it.
Open the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I, I went to sleep, I'm sorry. I'm awake now.
Just a question, oh, is the purpose of this just to raise taxes? Are we trying to alter behavior?
Yes.
I'm not sure that I'm equipped to, to, to answer that question. Well, but I could see why it's asked and I, I'm sure there's some of all of that across the years.
You, you could say it is an attempt to, uh, spread out the tax burden. One thing that counties have, have been asking for a long time, as long as I can remember, is, uh, to have ways to take the burden off property taxes.
They've also been asking, they've also been asking for equal taxing authority because cities, towns have been able to do this all along and the counties have been exempted from it.
Well, the county, so the counties have got, you know, the, the county had to put all their eggs in a few baskets. This allows us to spread the eggs out, you know?
And to some extent, I think, uh, the philosophy was that some decades ago, counties provided a lower level of services and therefore municipal governments had more tax choices on the menu. But now we find, uh, counties are actually picking up plenty of comparable services and then some of the basic services like schools and, uh, public safety are every bit as expensive as municipal services around infrastructure, for example.
Okay, let's, uh, let's go ahead at this point and do the public hearing, then we can discuss it. I'm sorry, I kind of lost track of what I was doing there. Uh, so we will, uh, at this time, open the public hearing. Drop the gavel. Allison, do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing?
We do not have anyone signed up and I did not previously receive any comments.
Okay, so we'll, uh, close the public hearing. And now what is the pleasure of the board?
I would move that we adopt this.
It's been moved that we, uh, adopt this. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. White. Discussion?
I, I think it's very smart of us to go ahead and adopt it, uh, regardless of what we do as far as implementing the tax. This gives us the option, uh, it gives us another tool in the toolbox as far as, uh, collecting alternate taxes if needed.
Yeah, I think the, the real decision will come later when we develop our own ordinance or, and set the rates, these kind of things. This, this is really a placeholder, uh, if we decide to do it, if we wanna be part of this organization, that's the right way.
Well, we need to know that the entire organization is gonna achieve the six, uh.
Right.
Representatives, six jurisdictions.
I would, you know, I would be more in favor of voting, knowing what the rate is gonna be.
Well, you'll have another vote on the tax.
It will say, so this is just a vote to do it or a vote?
No, this is a vote to join this.
Join the organization, okay, that's all.
That doesn't, that doesn't commit us to doing a tax.
Presumably, we could, we could do a tax, but it could be a, at a zero rate.
Or we could do a half a cent or a penny or two cents on a, on a cigarette, at the whole range.
Well, forty cents a pack is, is the, how much is a pack of cigarettes in one? I'm just curious. I don't know. I, I don't know. They're a lot more expensive than they used to be, I don't know.
I see signs for like six and seven dollars a pack.
A pack?
A pack. Like at Gertrude, or at gas stations.
I will, I will both date and, uh, and geographically locate myself, but I can remember when they came in the mail free. As soon as.
Well, you got it with your, uh, on, on the ships and, uh, in the, in the field.
Well, yeah, that too, but I mean, they, they, if, if you were the first one to the mailbox, you got, there was a pack in there. I, I can remember seeing cartons advertised for like two bucks.
Yes.
That's a carton. Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, even. I remember reading that more. When I was in North Carolina, they were. They first right. Yes. Third requirement. Okay, um. So this is to, uh, this is purely to, uh, join the group. Of course, it would be somewhat odd to join the group and then not set a, a tax. So I think it's reasonable to assume that we're doing this with the intention of.
I, I suspect that, uh, when we have the ordinance to establish the tax, we will probably get some comments as opposed to just joining this thing.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay, do we need a, uh, yes, we do.
Yeah, roll call.
Allison, uh, roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Kreger?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Okay, so it's a five oh vote to join the Regional Cigarette Tax Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, our second public hearing is, uh, involves an easement, uh, with the Rapahannock Electric Cooperative. Uh, board of supervisors will consider the conveyance of an underground service easement on county-owned property on Constitution Highway to, uh, Rapahannock Electric Cooperative by way of right-of-way easement agreement. Said easement is necessary for REC to connect power to a nearby residence under construction. Who's speaking to this?
I'll take that one.
Okay.
Um, in front of you is a right-of-way easement agreement that was presented to staff from Rapahannock Electric Cooperative. Um, attached to that easement agreement is a sketch, um, that shows the piece of county-owned property, um, fronting along Constitution Highway, um, with Rose Marie Drive, um, running to the west side of the property. Um, this is located at twenty-seven, five thirty-one Constitution Highway in Roseville. If that address sounds familiar, it's because a couple meetings ago, um, you all authorized staff to enter into a lease agreement with Anthony Mayo for that property. Um, the county attorney has looked at, at both the right-of-way easement agreement and the lease agreement and has determined that the request from Rapahannock Electric Cooperative is not in violation of the terms of the lease agreement. It will, the underground wire or cable that, um, REC will install, uh, install will be underground. It'll just be trench buried in there and it will not have any impact on, um, any, yes, crops or, you know, baleen hay or whatever is cutting on that property. Um, and the way that state code is set up, local governing bodies have to have a public hearing unless it's for, um, a transportation project or a capital improvement project, neither of which this is. Um, so that's the request that's in front of you. Once you open and close the public hearing after receiving any input, um, you would be able to, I'll press the county administrator to execute the right-of-way easement agreement.
Do we know which side of the property the new house is on?
Yes, it's to the west.
So off of Rose Marie Drive?
Yes, Rose Marie Drive, um. Uh, no, I didn't put the GIS graphic in here, but, um. It's a really, um, I think it's a stem lot on one side that goes up Rose Marie Drive and off, like, towards the east. And then, um, this parcel goes up Rose Marie Drive and off to the west. And REC wants to go along Route twenty there from its nearest distribution box to provide electricity.
Is it gonna remain underground as it serves this house?
Yes, sir, all the, all the way up. Um, the gentleman owns, I think, both parcels and so it'll remain underground all the way up.
Okay.
Now, that, that line is gonna be underground along Constitution Highway?
Yes, sir.
Just along the highway?
Mm-hmm. Just, yeah, so the, the county has that kind of rectangle piece property there and it would be where those views and the, the dash and dot lines are on the, on the drawing is where the underground. And it's, they're familiar with the node cabinet that's out there as well and it, it won't interfere with. Yeah, with that either.
Okay, just do cut the fiber going through. Yeah, please.
I made sure that they would be calling this utility before any, any of their work is done.
There's a lot, there's two hundred eighty-eight strands right there.
Yes.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, Norden and I receive any written, sorry, vice chairman.
All right.
Yes.
We'll close the public hearing. Uh, any discussion or someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to grant the easement.
The move by Mr. Frame, is there a second?
Give me one second.
I'll be second.
Mr. Marshall's second. Is any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Mr. Kreger?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Marshall.
All right, so that passes five zero. Mr.?
We have no clothes.
We have no clothes? So we can adjourn? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a, uh, motion?
Oh, no.
Mr. Kreger moves? Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.